Dear Lord, we thank you once again for the favor that you've shown to our city, to our residents. We ask that we reflect their needs in our decision-making regarding the city budget and any other issues that come with us in your name.
Fledgling allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak from the public now is your opportunity to come forward on any non-agendized item, seeing nobody virtually or in person running forward. We're going to move on to the scheduled items. Item number one is a public hearing, Council Bill O-2022-02. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we would like to continue this item through the next meeting, please.
Okay. Continued. After that, we have the consent calendar. Move it. First.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk?
Motion to approve the items on the consent calendar as presented. Councilmember Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Partamp Daly?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Our consent calendar is approved.
Thank you very much. Nothing under old business, but we do have an item under new business, which is a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority with a presentation from our Finance Committee.
Can you please open the Housing?
Yes, and we're going to open the Housing Authority combined. And it looks like Councilmember Jindal has joined us also. Can you hear us? India. Wow. That's pretty impressive. So this is a matter of public forum, but Councilmember Jindal is joining us from the country of India, as I understand it. And with California Brown Act regulations, we did provide proper notice that anyone wishing to attend at whatever location he is at can do so. So I'm not exactly certain where that's at, but if a member of the public wants to join him, they can. Oh, we got you. Can you hear us?
I am.
All right. This is a first, at least for the city. Yeah. But have we ever had a Zoom meeting with that sister city? There you go. Okay. Mr. City Manager, moving on to item number six.
Yes, I would like the Sonya to present the budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, please.
Good evening, Councilmembers, City Staff, and members of the audience. We are here to present to you the City of Loma Linda's Fiscal Year 2223 Proposed Budget. Now, this is going to be a summarized version, as we did have a workshop at the end of April, and so this will just be a summarized presentation. We're going to cover the General Fund, the Key Operational Fund, and any unassigned, assigned, and committed fund balance. The city as a whole, which includes all funds, including General Fund, the Enterprise Fund, Special Revenues, Capital, and Debt Service Funds. And then we'll also cover the Loma Linda Housing Authority. Since we had the workshop, we did have a little bit of changes, and I will go over the General Fund changes first, and then later on, we'll see the changes that we did as of the joint workshop for the city as a whole. So for the General Fund, the unassigned fund balance that you saw in the cash or the projected cash spreadsheet, which is the big one, we had a $10,572,341 fund balance. And after the joint workshop, there was a valuation of expenditures that required an increase for security devices for the courtyard, and then a small increase of $15,100 for the CAL FIRE contract. And so that brought the General Fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, to $10,527,241. So here we have a recap of the total ending fund balance. If you recall from 2021, '22, we had unassigned fund balance of 8.4 million, almost 8.5 million. The unassigned and committed did not change from '21, '22 to '22, '23. I apologize for the typo. And so the ending, projected ending fund balance for 2022 is 11.7 million. And then for the following year, we project to end at 13.7, 13.8 million. And this is for the breakdown of the revenues and expenditures, revenues and resources, expenditures and uses for the General Fund. For fiscal year 21, '22, we started with the 8.4 million of unassigned fund balance, and we have 25.7 million in revenues and resources, and then expenditures of 25.6, ending in 8.5, almost 8.5 million. For 22, '23, we're projecting revenues to come in at 26.4, and expenditures to be 24 million for a total ending proposed fund balance, unassigned fund balance of 10.5 million. Here we have the top seven revenues for the General Fund. For 21, '22, we were projecting to have 6.8 million in sales tax, and that includes any abatements that we are projecting to pay out. For 22, '23, we're projecting 6.192 net of the abatements, so it's a 24%. It makes 24% of the total budget for the General Fund, and it's a small decrease of 10%. For admin overhead, we're projecting to increase to 3.7 million based on the capital projects that we have proposed, that we are proposing for next year. You'll see the federal grant of 2.9 million. That remains the same. That was a two-year funding. We received half of it for 21, '22. We'll receive the same amount for 22, '23. And it was decided that that amount would go to cover any FIRE salaries. For 21, '22, it covered up through March, so we're anticipating about the same amount for 22, '23. And then the other small change is property taxes. It's increasing about 3%. The Loma Linda contract that we have with the Medical Center for Law Enforcement Services is increasing about 5%, and then the franchise fees, it's increasing about 4%. For expenditures, the adjusted expenditures for the General Fund are ending at 25 million, 25.7 million. And as you can see, there's a little bit of a change for Public Works, and that is due to some vehicles that they would like to purchase for this coming year. And we went over that in detail at the workshop. For Community Development, there's a decrease of about 45%, and that is just due to code enforcement being moved over to the FIRE department, and also for the salary savings for half a year for the Assistant City Manager, and then that position not being filled for the following year. For Police Services, the increase was 5%, although the contract, you'll see later on, is only a 2.5% increase. We went ahead and did 5% because the overtime charges and then the fuel is coming in quite a bit higher than it has in previous years. And so this will cover the overtime and then fuel and maintenance for the vehicles. For General Government, you'll see that there's a decrease of, from 2.8 million to 880,000, and that was mainly due to the additional two payments that were approved by City Council for the unfunded liability. That is not going to happen for 22, '23. And the proposed expenditures for 22, '23 will be 24 million. And here we have a recap of the General Fund balance, which includes the committed amounts. The beginning fund balance is 11.7 million with revenues of 26.3, expenditures and uses of 24.3. We predict to end the year with 13.8 million, and that is an additional 2 million to General Fund Reserve. And these are the changes for the city overall. If you remember in the projected ending fund balance that we gave you at the workshop, we were estimating to have 38.8 billion for citywide. After reviewing some of the revenues that were not going to be received by the year-end, as well as expenditures that were not going to take place by year-end, there was an unrealized revenue and expenditure changes of 1.3 million. And then for revenue, we received notice that the sales tax measure was going to come in a little bit higher by 154,000, so we're accounting for that change. For expenditures, for the General Fund, we covered it. It was 45,000. And then there was an evaluation of the projects for next year, so there was an addition to pavement rehab, California Street widening, and then replace the one-inch water service lateral. That's coming out from the Water Fund. And then the purchase of a generator for 77,000. So that, those changes and expenditures total 1,034,900, and that brings the total fund balance for the city to 39.3 million. And here we have a comparison for the city. For 21, '22, we were projecting to end the fund balance at 47.8 million. And with revenues and resources overall for the city at 56.5 million and expenditures of 65 million, we predict to end the year for 2023 at 39.2 million. And as you can see, there's a decrease of 8.5 million for fund balance. And that's mainly the proposed project of adding a 1.6 million gallon reservoir, which makes up 6.5 million, and it's projected to be a loan from Special Projects of 2.8 million, as well as covered by Water Acquisition Fund. And then also for the Hinckley House, we're proposing to do improvements and install a walking track at Hulicorex, as well as California Street widening of 1.6 million. Okay, here we have the total overall revenues for the city. We have the General Fund for 22, '23, projected at 26.2 million, which we've, or 26.3 million that we've already covered. The Sewer Fund, projecting 5.5. Connected Communities, not much of a change. And the Water Fund, projecting expenditures of 7.5 million. Capital Funds, projecting 2.1 million in expenditures, I'm sorry, revenues. And then Other Funds, 8.7 million of revenues. Capital Fund revenues are lower in 2023 because there's a decrease of development fees anticipated, with the largest decrease being in water acquisition, park acquisition, and regional traffic impact compared to 21, '22. Here we have a summary of the expenditures for the city. The General Fund has 24.3 million projected for 22, '23. Sewer Fund, 5.1. Connected Communities, a little bit of an increase of 1.1. We're anticipating doing marketing to try to get more customers connected to our services. The Water Fund, 8.4 million. Capital Funds of 11 million, 11.9 million. Other Funds of 9.2, for a total of 60 million for next year. The largest increase that you see there is 11.9, which is for the 1.6 million gallon reservoir. Here's a recap of the proposed budget. Beginning fund balance, which includes the committed amounts, is 47.8 million. Revenues and resources of 56.5 million. Expenditures and uses of 65 million, bringing the ending fund balance to 39.3 million, and that's a net change of 8.5 million negative. And then lastly, we have the Loma Linda Housing Authority. There's not much change in the activity for the Housing Authority for this coming year. The only thing that really decreased was the revenues and resources. We're anticipating $15,000 less in interest on housing loans. And then expenditures and uses pretty much stay the same, and so we're anticipating to end the fund balance with 1.8 million. In conclusion, we would like to note that in addition to our conservative revenue projections, staff has incorporated estimates due to the continued COVID-19 impact, as well as current world events, and have prudently proposed expenditures, as we do every year. The proposed budget for fiscal year 22, '23 for the General Fund include 10.5 million in unassigned, 1.25 million in assigned, 2 million in committed fund balance, which brings it to 13.7. And we'd like to thank every department and their staff for the contribution that they've made to putting this proposed budget together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya. Okay.
Let me add, this is Sonya, first budget as a Finance Director. Second, woo-hoo!
Yeah, still last year. Great job. Thank you. Okay, next, we'd like to bring up the Chair of our Budget Committee.
Thank you, City Council, City Manager, and all the staff. At the beginning of every year, we always kind of say the same thing, but I'm going to do it again this year. As always, the Budget Committee would like to recognize the City Manager, staff, and employees of Loma Linda in working together to realize this year's budget. The Budget Committee continues to appreciate the working relationships between employees and the management. The city functions because of all of you. Without you, the city would not, would stop working for the citizens of Loma Linda. There's not a whole lot to talk about in the budget. It's pretty much down what has to be done, and it's spent rather well. So based on that, we're going to continue with our qualified, well-run city for the city of Loma Linda. And however, we do see things on the horizon that may be getting a little bit harder as time goes on. Some of those things will be rising inflation, disruption in the supply chain because of the COVID pandemic, and failing existing and future positions of the city's workforce. Also, right now, I'd like to just kind of, just make sure, the view of the City Council, we think, still needs to be, instead of a single-year, year-by-year look, it has to be a more multi-view, longer term. So when you make a decision, you got to kind of think the person that's sitting in my chair 10 years from the road, down the road, has taken advantage and has your advantage of your wisdom today for those decisions. So the recommendations aren't a lot, but again, the always warning for this is, if offsetting revenues are not found, the citizens of Loma Linda are at risk to increase taxes to maintain current levels of city services. So right now, we are in the position that we're able to cover everything that we need to cover at the levels in which the citizens seem to be okay with. If those changes, then we may have some more issues, but for right now, everything looks okay. So right now, we're not going to ask for any buy-down contributions to the Calpers, which of course is reflected in the report that you just saw. But we do have concerns about been running lean and mean on the workforce. Ever since the 2008 Great Recession, we've gone into this huddled type of mode, and we made it through better than almost every other city in California. But as we continue to try to climb out of it, there's other issues that have to be, start to deal with, and that is start filling those positions. And we start to see that there's some drawbacks of having a too lean and mean type of a workforce. So what, the recommendation that we're kind of looking at is to have the City Manager fill out in a practical manner all the positions that would need to be filled, including the City Manager position, and what it would cost to have that done. So that either, as a council, you get to start to review what needs to be done, and also at the same time, what it's going to do on the budget itself. There are some issues that happen, I think, with a downside of lean and mean. And that starts getting into, at least from my experience being in business as long as I have, is that if it's, if you have too many positions and you try to break it up, you have some conflicting or maybe not sure command lines that have to be reinstituted. And so if you expand those positions out, you're going to have different people in those deals, then you have to just make sure that the command lines are still intact. Another one is when they're in the contraction thing, and you have multiple jobs on one position, you have oversight deterioration. And the oversight deterioration just happens because two positions may be looking out after each other, but in one position, it's not being looked at as often that you do. Also, you run the risk of brain drain if key personnel were to leave, and that starts to have issues for long-term viability of functioning in the city. Also during that time, you also have employee fatigue and possible employee dissatisfaction. Fortunately here, I don't think we have too much abundance of that, because everybody kind of bought into Loma Linda kind of working together. And that's why we do appreciate everybody kind of working together as well as they've done. Not so well in many other cities, again. So with that, there's just one little caveat, and this is just probably the, since I just need to be, it's a budget person today rather than a Budget Committee. I think that along with everything that's been happening, I would like to see, and this is probably more of a personal thing, along with the chain and command lines being associated, a review of all the complaint handling and of how the, how the employees see things happening. And that is who to report to who, and what the employee expects to have happen when a complaint is made. So that is all part of this, is when you start to expand out, other things start to happen. Who's going to complain about what? That kind of deals that with it. That's just kind of like a personal thing. Didn't have anything really do with the budget itself, but I got, I threw that in, since I wrote it up. So the other little conditions that we had, we don't see any additions to the reserves. There's not a lot left to be over, so we're not asking anything for that. Again, no recommendations on reduction of services of any type. And I think the only last thing is that we do have this one little deal, Landscape District, that doesn't seem to be able to support itself, and it's basically gone the same. And we would like to see, try and have something done to try and eliminate the costs or reduce the costs of maintaining that as a green belt in the traditional sense of a green belt, doing something else with it, so that it still looks nice, but at the same time, trying to reduce that cost. Because I don't think I'm going to vote for it, because I live in the, in that district. If the whole city wants to do it and go after us, I guess that's okay, but I don't think I'm going to vote for it if it comes up. Also, oh, last thing is that we don't see any recommendations for the Vehicle Fund, Replacement Fund. The way it's been functioning right now is we've always, there's been enough money to be throwing in there to buy the vehicles that are required, and it's not being expended directly out of the fund itself. It's kind of like add it in, buy it, and push it back out. So it's being covered, but sooner or later, I think the City Council has to try and have a commitment to try and fill that fund up enough to kind of keep it rolling on its own rather than these extraordinary purchases that we're doing. I'm happy they're happening, but at some time, we may not have that luxury. Other than that, I think the Budget Committee thinks everybody's done a real good job, and we wish to thank and commend again the staff, City Manager, to allow us to get all access of the information that we needed to review this, and we appreciate it and hope you let us do it next year.
Excellent report. I read it two or three times, just to be sure I understood it all. But I, and the second time through, I answered most of my own questions, but I could use some help in clarifying a couple of things. One suggestion, next time maybe number them, and then I can tell you exactly where I'm at. But if you count down, one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, in the middle of that, there's a comment that says the disparity between property tax revenue and the cost of city services to support the additional units, the new housing projects. What is, what is the metric to determine that? Because this is a complex budget. So what would the metric be? And that's the first question. The second is, how big a disparity is there? And the third is, what are the implications for additional development? Because we've got more developments on the plan.
The general rule is houses do not pay for themselves. There's not enough revenue coming from the property tax to cover all the services that they have to do. The actual disparity really is a function of how much the property tax is. Right now, a lot of the new houses and a lot of resales are at a high price, and that kind of lowers the gap temporarily. But if there's a housing bubble and it drops, then I don't think necessarily that we'll have a big drop in fire and police wages to cover that disparity. So those continue to stay there while there's a drop of income. So, those continue to stay there while there's a drop of income for the property tax.
So, just to see if I understand you. If new housing developments never pay for themselves in terms of assessing that against revenue from property taxes, are you, I mean, that could be conquered. If we raise property taxes enough, they would pay for them. I mean, nobody wants to do that, obviously, and I'm running for reelection, so now would be a bad time to talk about it. But, so, what makes up that gap? State and federal monies?
Businesses.
That's why we'd like to see, that's why at the very beginning, one of the deals is that if no additional revenue is found,
Yeah.
that's what makes up that gap. So, Loma Linda is, yeah, Loma Linda has always been,
Creative.
had a deficit on revenue from businesses, because we didn't have a lot of businesses that generated that revenue. In the past ten years, we've gotten a lot better. If you really look at what was happening, you know, ten years ago and today, it's kind of dramatic on what Loma Linda has done, just with, you know, hotels and some other businesses. At one time, we lost a lot of the car dealership out of the area, and that was one of our deals. So, we swap things around, but we always have to be cognizant that if we can pull somebody into the city to try and generate more revenue for us, that makes up that gap. That will, that will do it. As, the reason why kind of Loma Linda is kind of stuck is the way the taxes are calculated, we're, we're at the low end of recovery from the property tax. Other cities have a larger percentage that get from the state. Loma Linda was done at a time in which it was at a lower rate, and we're kind of stuck at that percentage. So, it's, in effect, our cross to bear, and we have to try and figure out how to overcome those. And, revenue from businesses would do that.
So, part of your, the last point on that page, when you're recommending that in planning future budgets, we take a more multi-year approach, the issue we're talking about related to tax revenue not covering the cost of support for those developments, that we look at, what are the other revenue sources gonna be that make up that difference?
That would be, how creative can the city council get in trying to create any more revenue than we do now?
Right. And it's, it's hard to know and to project, but there are, you know, obviously, a lot of, there's a lot of things that are proposed that we think are coming. We just can't necessarily bank on them, for sure, but we definitely have been working on a lot of things. For example, the retail that we plan on putting down there, potential additional hotels that are coming. We have to renegotiate our Mansfield deal here coming up pretty soon. So, those are a lot of things that were put in place that were started ten, twelve years ago by our predecessors, and we've been able to continue. So, it's, it's just a very conservative projection that if we're not able to follow through on those things that we've all been working on, then potentially, we have some challenges. And that's why we all have to remain engaged in that quest to bring in the right, the right things that'll fit.
Well, there's a fit issue and also just a gathering issue. And, a few years ago, we had people that were donated almost full-time to go out and try and scare businesses into the area, so to speak. That doesn't always seem to work, because everybody goes, "Oh, you don't have enough rooftops." You look at most of the demographics of the area, Loma Linda doesn't look good on paper for a lot of these businesses. And so, they're not necessarily attracted over to us. So, things like Mansfield, that was like a little drop from heaven in this case, is that it fit perfectly. It's very clean. They provide services. They provide revenue for us, and they get, they get a good place to land and be able to do business here. So, those type of businesses would be great, but they're not something that they're going to come out from.
So, I'm not an economic development director or employee, but I do have a position, an opinion, that businesses are attracted to places that are safe. And so, we've put a lot into our public safety in the last couple of years by encouraging various things, some things that didn't cost us anything. For example, the highway patrol station moving into town. And those are ways for us to expand and quantify our public safety precedents, which in turn, if you look at a lot of businesses, well, if you look at kind of what's going on across Southern California, just turning on the news at night, watching the crime reports, things like that, not that we don't have our challenges, but we have far fewer challenges than a lot of other places. So, I really do believe, and we're starting to see some of that, that businesses will often, even from the neighboring cities, come over and test the water as to whether or not we have space for them. But again, it's picking the right type of business that fits our community, so.
If you flip to the next page, under Recommendations, the first, I'm sorry, second bullet, bullet, under Recommendations, at the end of the empty bullet, well, just below that, you say, "We recommend, after complimenting the city on their Pers buy-down debt", then you're recommending that we no longer, or at least not for the current year, continue to buy it down. Now, some of us have been pretty supportive of that and feel good about leaning out our debt with the intention of ultimately eliminating that debt. And as you pointed out, we're in a much better position than any of the other inland empire cities that I'm aware of, but I don't know them as well as I know this one.
That, yeah, that has a two-edged sword to it. This year,
Buying down the debt?
Buying down the debt, in this case, does do what we want to do, so we don't have to pay future interest. That's a whole point of buying it down.
Sure.
And so, but, though we congratulate ourselves for buying down the debt, and Calpers has, in the last couple of years, has done real well in the stock market. If you looked at the stock market lately, I don't, I would probably guess, I don't know where it's at right now, but Calpers doesn't look as good today than it did, say, six months ago.
But I thought that was the premise, that when you say, "Investments by Calpers may soon, oh, may soon be reversed."
Yeah. They may all of a sudden look worse than it is. So, what debt we have today may be a lot more because of that than that we're expecting. So, since we don't know exactly what it is, and we're trying to be conservative, I think the whole idea is that, let's not, we're kind of, keep it as it is right now. There's no real big rush to do it until we have to.
And why is that, again, I'm not?
If Calpers does real well on the stocks,
Right.
our liability goes down.
So, Calpers, by their good investments, could potentially eliminate our debt force.
The only thing in the way of that is Sacramento. So, I was in Sacramento two weeks ago, and there are a lot of groups that are pushing for Calpers to divest from fossil fuel companies and take a loss because of the environmental consequence. So, there are a lot of factors that can affect what happens at the state level that can change our picture quickly, that we have no control over.
Yeah, and also the stock market itself.
Yeah, stock markets and tanking.
So, essentially, you're saying we should stay in cash this year?
Well, we probably have to been doing that since 2008.
Life is cash.
Yes.
It's essentially, it earns, what, 1%?
Yeah.
It's 0.52 right now.
But it's better than dropping 40% in a crashing stock market, so.
Correct.
That's,
If your investment is, it's probably safer to go into a half percent than risk. Now, you could be one of those companies that skyrocket, but if you divest it correctly, then you'll probably follow the,
Do you have any advices on, advice on what type of mattress to stuff?
Cash.
An air mattress.
Okay, I have one last question.
Okay.
And that's at the very bottom paragraph of the same page. "The committee suggests the city council to request the city manager to design a practical build-out of positions, and what additional expenses would be needed to fill these positions, including the city manager position." I'm not sure what you mean by practical build-out of positions. Are we talking about an organizational chart? Are we talking about a organizational chart plus a strategic plan? Or, that includes anticipated or outcomes or goals and key performance indicators? So, I'm not quite sure what a practical build-out of positions mean. I think you mean more than just listing the empty positions.
Well, there's a, there's two things. There's a paper diagram that has,
Organizational chart.
organizational, that exists today.
Yes.
And, some of those positions, practically, they may not be used again, or may be used less, or maybe gone half-time or whatever else. The practical part of it is, what the city manager would say, "Okay, this is where I would start to fill them in", and those particular fill-ins, not every single one, would then have a dollar associated with that position. And that additional dollars would then be part of a report to be able to give to you so that you would know, if we were to hire five more people, let's say, this is the positions that they're gonna be taking, this is the additional money that's gonna be, the budget's gonna have to handle, to handle that.
I'll just jump in right here, based, again, I read through all of this too, and we're obviously on the same page, and we've talked a lot about this. We, as a council, just recently gave the city manager direction to start analyzing and potentially filling some of these gaps that I think you're referring to, and starting to move that forward, for a lot of the reasons that you state in the report, just to ensure that we, that we're managing appropriately, the few resources that we have, but yes, that we're managing correctly. So, that direction was given. He has taken that, and he is going to be bringing back some very specific things to us as a council to improve.
Let me put it this way, I slept a lot better last night after talking to the,
We met yesterday, and I imported the direction that the council had given from our last, our last meeting about it.
And that's all good and appropriate. It still doesn't hit my sweet spot. I don't know what you're looking for on a piece of paper. I think you're talking about more than taking the positions in the org chart that are open and just attaching a salary. I think you're talking about more than that. I think you're talking about, are there places, are there some of those positions that could be eliminated? Are there some that could be merged? Are there some that should remain merged with, whether it's the city manager or somebody else? So, I think you're talking about more than,
It's not just filling the boxes. It's more in line with that, is that,
A plan.
When those, when those, when that org chart was developed, the city was in a certain position. As time moved on, the org chart, a lot of times, just stays constant, and you fill in two boxes with one person, or you take one box and divide it out to five people.
Why it's important that an org chart be linked with a strategic plan?
Yes.
What are the outcomes we're trying to achieve here?
Mm-hmm.
And where are the gaps currently?
Yes.
Okay. Now, does that all resonate with you?
Yes, and that's what I've been asking for, direction from the city council. And I heard that yesterday afternoon, we have job descriptions ready. As soon as the council approved the budget, I will come back and start adding the position in.
That's the end of my questions, but I want to start, or end where I started, and that is, this was an excellent report, and in spite of my questions, I think it was written well, and please take our appreciation and congratulations back to the committee, including Gary, who's out here looking quite proud at the moment, so.
You got joined, you got backup.
Thank you, Gary.
So, thank, thank you.
Councilman Gendol.
Two questions. First, if one of the recommendations is a multi-year budget, is there anything stopping this great multi-year budget next time around, or next year?
Are you talking a multi-year budget?
The, where it says that the Budget Committee should continue to recommend a multi-year budget to get a better sense of balance and certain costs, and certain revenue.
I think, I think ultimately, the city may be prepared to go to a multi-year budget. I don't think this coming year would probably be the year to try and do it. We have people that are in training, and I think just going through the process a little bit more often than two years. And I think the city council would also have to get used to the concept of a little bit more long-range planning for that type of tool to use. But, I think multi-year budgets are better on strategic planning type of issues than a single-year budget. And that's the only reason why the Budget Committee has suggested a multi-year budget is more for strategic outcomes rather than just budgetary process.
Is that, if we put it into motion, so maybe next year, if I have to do it, but if it's two years from now, it's hard to make a decision?
That's, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. The challenge I have during a multiple-year, a two-years budget is, is a revenue and really the labor cost. Because we don't know the labor cost, you know, is it gonna be 5% increase, 10% increase, or 2% that? And labor is a big part of the budget, and that was the one that I have a hard time projecting. If you have a three-year contract with a labor group, then you have no problems, they could do that. But when you have, come too closer to one year left in the contract, or two year left in the contract, it's hard to do.
Well, this was the first time last year that we did a multi-year,
Correct.
labor.
Because of recession, we have.
Yeah, so, so I think we've set ourselves up potentially for something like that here in the future by taking those first steps.
I think the vagaries of inflation will make it very difficult to project anything beyond one year. Especially if inflation is continuing to rise, that would just gut any two-year plan.
Of course, there's, inflation is a multifactorial issue in and of itself that even our own country doesn't have complete control of. There's a lot of other influences on it.
Mr. Gendol, you had another question?
Second question. So, I remember, I remember last year, you mentioned the green belt as well. Is there any idea of how we would have drawn seeds forward if we wanted to look into doing something that goes forward, must affect this, but still nice to look at?
He's asking about the green belt and the Landscape Maintenance District.
Yes, we did try. If you notice around, about your neighborhood, we put in, removed all the shrub and put in the rocks and boulder and decomposed granite. We tried, and then a couple of years later, we have wheat, weeds coming through. And it's, it's hard to maintain, and so, we try. But the problem with the Landscape Assessment District is the labor cost. The cost of maintaining it is getting higher and higher, and it's not water and electricity, it's the labor. So, and if you want to keep our landscape looking nice, it's cost more.
And that's, that's an important thing to note. You mentioned water, and that's where I think a lot of people get confused about various water districts and the availability of water, because we all know and hear that California is in the middle of a drought, which it is. However, we are in a different kind of position, particularly over the Bunker Hill Basin, where we have been paying, not just us, but other groups have been paying to refill the basin. And so, we're in a better water position than a lot of other communities are. So, there's not necessarily an absolute need to go to a hardscape based on water, but I think you're, what you're talking about is more about the cost to maintain it. Um, but I think you're, what you're talking about is more about the cost to maintain it.
Yeah, so following from that question, the budget committee has any recommendation on the green belt or something? So I'm not talking about hardscaping or rocks, uh, but something that might possibly cost a little more at a time that would save us ten years down the road.
The only thing we could potentially do is take it to a vote of the citizens. And that's where it's almost always likely to fail because nobody wants to vote higher taxes for themselves.
I'm talking about the taxes, talking about the, the green belt, idea of the green belt itself where they're saying might cost a little more than the price, but would save us more than five, ten, ten years down the road.
My response to that is, uh, we've had similar discussions about this before. And, um, there are some things I know a lot about and a lot of things I know just a little bit about. And this would fall in the category of I know almost nothing about. And, but there are experts and I'm sure University of Redlands or, or UCR, places like that, would have consultants if, if, uh, we decided we wanted to bring them in and draw plans and give us some counsel on it. I, I don't think that's under the purview of the finance committee though.
You're like, well, it is. And it, it's going to cost us at some, at some level to pay for that. No, no, to, no, to pay for the consultant. And that, and then that's where the finance committee says, hey.
That's why they call finance people controllers. They've got a control aspect to it.
Okay, it, uh, did that sort of answer your question? Bavin? Okay. And Dr. Rigsby, did you have anything? Jay, thank you very, very much. We appreciate you and everything you guys do. Jarb?
I, I have one bad news, uh, to the budget committees. Uh, our committee member, Jim Walling.
Yeah.
Passed away, uh, last week. So, so again, just wanted you to know. And eventually have to come back and select a new members to the budget.
Yeah.
As you could tell, right now we only got one showing up.
The budget committee of two, three.
We've increased a hundred percent the last. Good, thank you.
Thank you guys very, very much. Moving on to our five-year CIP. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is, pretty much every year, I will come to you to present the five-year capital improvement project plan or programs, uh, that we divided into seven different category. It's fleet, general building, parks and recreation, sewer, storm rain, street, street lights and water. There's a lot of potential funding source that we have been using or, or can use for, for all these capital improvements. Okay. So, like I mentioned before, the one that we want to concentrate on is next fiscal year, which is fiscal year 22, 23. These items are budgeted in next fiscal year. The, the remaining four-year is more like a planning tool that for the, for the budget committees, uh, we like to see it's a planning tool for, for the next, uh, four years. The reason we have a lot of vehicles on the list for next fiscal year is because this current fiscal year, we order a lot of trucks and equipment. And, but the problem is we can't buy any. Ford not making any more trucks and, and so we have a hard time buying this fiscal year. So what we did is move the list over to next year, transfer the money from this year to next year, hoping that, that, that automobile, uh, facility will, well, factory will build more cars and trucks. So this is our wish list for next year. And, and the first thing that we ask staff to do is as soon the city council approved the budget, we're going to order those trucks and equipment right away so that come July or, or, or even August, we can, we can award the contract to purchase those, those car and trucks. So there's a lot of them. And, and another reason was we used to have a lot of vehicles in reserve, the older one in the reserve or, or as a backup. I'm glad that we have that because during the COVID-19, uh, time, uh, the, the state or the public health required that one person to drive per truck. So therefore we had to use those, uh, reserve or, or backup trucks that we can, that we have for, for the staff to, to drive. So that's a good thing. General buildings, again, this last, of this fiscal year, we have completed the fire station remodel. And so next fiscal year or the next five year, I would like to concentrate on the city yard where we need to build a new city yard building that, um, I'm looking at the, the fire department. I would not let my fire marshal go to inspect our building because it probably, if I does not like it. So next year, we're going to start working on the design. And the following two-year, hopefully we'll get, uh, construction started. We also going to do some maintenance to the city, city hall here. Uh, we, 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 we've been doing every year, replace the carpet, replace the ceiling tile, the lighting and so forth. That's my plan for, for next fiscal year. For park, this is, uh, this is the fun thing that I like to do. Uh, like Councilman Jindal requests, we have been budgeting money for tree planting every years. And, and, and next year, we plan to spend about $40,000 for tree planting. We're going to plan to install more security lighting and camera at all the city parks. We plan to do more art in public places. Uh, Heritage Park is a park that north, on the north side of Mission. We plan to do more improvement at that park. Hodor Crooks Park, we plan to install another walking track. If you have a chance to drive by the Linda Bailey Park, the new park, the track that we put in, a lot of people using that, that walking tracks. In addition to the track, we put in the lighting around the, the track. We put in picnic tables and the trees are coming in, uh, in two weeks. So it's going to be, it's going to be box trees, but not where it big yet. But eventually it will grow big and provide more shade at that, at all the park. So I plan to do something similar at the, um, at Hodor Crooks Park. Oh, by the way, the new park at Lennar Homes Track are now open, so.
They're publicly open?
Yes, sir.
We should make an announcement on that.
Yeah, so, so the next thing is I have to go to the park identification committee. We need to come up with some names. So I will work with committee first and then we'll bring it back to.
How, I've got a proposal, Carbon Capture Park.
What is that?
Where we put the trees.
And then again, uh, uh, if you look at it, I plan to plant trees every year. I plan to put more lightings and more art in public places and then keep improving our, uh, city parks. The sewer fund, uh, we don't have a lot of money in the sewer fund, but we plan to spend money on improve our sewer lift station. We have one, uh, at the end of Juanita Street. So it's under design, so we're going to put in a new pump. But this pump, in addition to just a pump, we can put a grinding machine. So to grind the fabric, people use that, that, that cloth or paper, a wipe, and then throw in the toilet where it's plugged up the pump. So before it go to the pump, it will go to the grinding machine that grind to the little pieces. And then so the pump will work because right now we have to go in there and pull it out and then start it backed up, so. Storm rain project, we don't have any for next fiscal year, but for the future year, we can do some small one. Or, or, or the big one is Barton Road, uh, uh, Storm Rain on New Jersey and, and California Street. This is, this is on Barton Road, kind of in front of Oco A and PM because the area to the south side of, uh, Barton is kind of vacant lot. But the reason I put in the future year is because now the land is start going to be developed. And those people have to take care of their own drainage. So they might have to put in their own storm rain pipe to tie into the Santa Mateo Channel. That's why I waited for the future year, if it can be done by the developers builder, I would do that, prefer to do that. Pavement rehabilitation, I went through that last, at the last city council meeting. Again, we are doing a very good job with little money we have, uh, received from gas tax, half cent sale tax. We are doing very good. And we try to do more than, than just the reseal. Now we want to do grind and overlay with rubberized asphalt. The water fund, um, be- because as part of pavement rehabilitation, we like to do, take care of the water first. We already took care of majority of the pipeline, the main pipeline. So next year, what we plan to do is, is replace some lateral, which is existing, a plastic lateral that we're going to replace with a copper pipe. And that's between the area on, on the south side of Lawton, all the way to Huron and Pablo Street, all the way to Mountain View. We have replaced all of that and then we will come back and grind pave the street. Another big one is we're going to plan to install the, uh, 1.6 million gallon reservoir at the cost of $6 million. The plan is completed, I'm ready to go out to bid, but then I talked to the engineer. They told me that well job right now, the steel is hard to find and, and it's hard to find a contractor. So I'm going to wait and see, maybe in January or, or, or February of next year, I will go out to bid. And the reason we have to do all of this is we have a lot of houses, uh, uh, that will be coming up. So we need more water tank. And we also have money budget for a, a well rehabilitation because of all of this. Like, I'm glad Kurt is here, he's the one who helped me with running the pumps. Our wells are old, so we put the money in the budget to do rehabilitation to, to our wells so that we can pump it to the new reservoir. We have to replace, uh, uh, some, some valve, uh, and, and also they're putting a new, a 12-inch water line on Beaumont. This is to the east end of town on Beaumont Avenue by the railroad tractor because we can have a lot of new homes on the north side of Beaumont on, on New Jersey. So by extending that 12-inch pipe to tie to that eight-inch pipe, it created a nice big loop. I'm still deal with the, the railroad and, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers and the County Flood Control. So the, um, the big thing for, for, for next fiscal year is vehicles replacement and the water reservoir. So that's my plan. Any question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, at this point, I guess we could entertain a, a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 adjusted appropriation limit.
So moved. It doesn't have to be red or anything.
Second.
In just a resolution to approve, yeah, okay.
I second it.
Motion is to adopt council bill 2022 dash 23 to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 adjusted appropriation limit. Um, Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Hi.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number E, our investment policy.
I don't have a presentation for it. We usually just, uh, present it and then you adopt it. I didn't change anything. We still continue to invest in life. The low, uh, the ink, the rate is increasing. It was at point two in July and now it's at point five two. So it is going up a little bit, but it's safe.
Any questions from the council? Is that just a file, receive and file type of thing? Okay, uh, moving on to F, COPS Grant Expenditure Plan.
I also did not make a presentation for this. This is a report that needs to be, uh, presented to you. It's the expenditure plan for the COPS grant. It's to supplement the sheriff's service specialist position. It, um, covers all of the costs, including overtime and then some miscellaneous costs for, uh, kids watch program, explorers, uh, law enforcement competition, red ribbon, say no to drugs campaign. Um, we purchased supplies for the three schools and then also purchased, uh, citizens patrol uniforms and then, uh, assist with the installation dinner.
Okay, I am going to, out of abundance of caution, uh, remove myself from the next item G, which pertains to our contract with the sheriff's department. Although for the record, I do not in any way financially benefit from the contract. I just, uh, will step aside and allow you guys to deal with it as needed.
Mr. Mayor Portem, so every year, uh, I will have a meeting with the county sheriff of which time they will present me with the Schedule A, which is the cost proposal for next fiscal year, uh, law enforcement services contract. Next fiscal year, they are proposing an increase of 2.5%, which is very good. We never have this happen before. And one of the reason was because of their, uh, return in the investment for the retirement has been improved, so therefore they have less funding for, for, it's similar to our purse, but there's a different retirement program. So it's a cost saving, uh, in that one. So, uh, staff recommend that the city council approve the, uh, the Schedule A for the law enforcement services with the county sheriff department.
Councilman Rigsby?
I move it.
Bavin, can you second from there or do you have any questions? Okay. I have just, just one question. Um, I don't have any comparison outside of the small, you know, relatively small increase. In terms of level of service, has anything changed from last year to this year?
No, sir.
Proposed budget?
I'm, I'm looking at our brand new Captain Peterson and our lieutenant, uh, Smith.
There's no change in the level of service, no.
So the same items that we have listed here are what we're anticipating, what we already experienced this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then.
Thing, they, they have been doing a great job. So I want to compliment the, uh, the, the county sheriff for, for their services to our city, so.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, then, uh, would we just receive and file or? Oh, we have to vote on this one? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Motion is to approve Schedule A pertaining to the contract with the sheriff's department. Councilman Jindal?
Hi.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll go see if we can retrieve the mayor so he can continue his job. No questions about that item, but there were some comments about, uh, the city council and the cost that we're.
From what I understand, it's, uh, about half the increase that it was last year.
Yeah, no, he, he pointed that out. I was trying to make a joke.
Dramatic for me? Like I said, it doesn't matter to me either way, so. Right?
It didn't work.
That's okay. All right, congratulations, you guys kept your jobs. They're looking at me like, shut up. Uh, all right, moving on to H, Council Bill R dash 2022 dash 25. And that is resolution to adopt and approve the wildland fire protection contract.
I would like to have Talan Sheev, Jeff Gillett, present his item, please.
So as you know, we've had a contract with CAL FIRE for several years for our wildland contract. It's basically an augmented services. So when we do have a wildland fire, the costs associated with that are greatly reduced by paying CAL FIRE. So for instance, the big cost items are aircraft. And you see the aircraft flying there, each drop is 20 to $30,000. So it's basically an insurance policy. So when we do have our fires out there, they come in, they don't take over our services, but they augment the services. And they help us get to back, get to be a city again too while our incident is happening. So any questions on the contract?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a first and a second.
Motion is to adopt City, adopt City Council Bill R-2022-25 to approve the Wildland Fire Protection Contract Number 3 CA 043297, between the California Department of Forestry and the Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, and the city for the fiscal year 2022, 23, in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, five-hundred-sixty-nine, point seven-seven, and authorize the mayor or Mayor Portem to sign the contract pursuant to Government Code 40601. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Now, the big item.
I move it.
First.
A second.
And a second. For the record, it's for the budget, so.
I wanted to just mention that on the PowerPoint, the Council Bill is not listed, but on the agenda, it is listed.
Council Bill R-2022-24.
Correct. Motion is to adopt Council Bill R-2022-24 to approve the Lo Melinda 2022, 2023 fiscal year budget. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I move the Housing Authority budget.
I think that was a second by Councilmember Jindal?
Motion is to adopt Housing Authority Bill R-2022-01 to approve the Lo Melinda Housing Authority 2022, 2023 fiscal year budget. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Do we have any reports of council members? Any reports of officers?
Yes, I asked Karen from the Chamber of Commerce to, to say something, because, again, I want to let you know that, that, that the chamber has been struggling during the past two years due to COVID. And for next fiscal year, she asked if we help her a little bit more, so, so we, I, which we did, we part, we just approved the, the budget. So, I encourage Karen to come over tonight and, and explain what she planned to do, and...
I just wanna say thank you. COVID almost killed us. I feel like we're back to where we were five years ago when I started. I feel like I have complete support from this city. I talk to other executive directors at other cities, and they actually fight with their city over things, and I never feel like that. I get such great support, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank, and thank you for what you've done in the last five years. I'm sorry that it's, but you've done a lot for us.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Farmers market.
Okay, we're going to adjourn the City Council and move right into the Housing Authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, and there's only one item, which is the, one item we have to deal with, which is the Consent Calendar.
Move it.
We have a first. And a second.
A motion to approve the attached list of demands for payment for the Housing Authority Board. Councilman Jindal? Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily? Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, any reports of officers? Any reports of members? Seeing none, we will close the Housing Authority and move on.
Did you do public comment?
Oh, public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak about the riveting Housing Authority agenda? Or, I'm sorry, any item that was not on the agenda, please run forward. Should we give them, what, twenty minutes?
We can go plant a tree.
All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on and close the Housing Authority and open up the Successor Agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted there?
No, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak on any non-agendized item on the Successor Agency, I'll give you thirty minutes this time. That's just irritating my peers, because they wanna close this. Okay, we'll move, or I'll look for a motion to move the Consent Calendar. Have a motion. And a second.
Motion is to approve the attached list of demands for payment for April 26, May 10, and May 24, 2022, for the Successors Agency, and the minutes for April 12, 2022, as presented. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Daily?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any reports of officers? Reports of members? Seeing none, we will adjourn the Successor Agency. That concludes our meetings.
Great job, Natalie.